You don't even make a buck like that, do you?
My license is.
He's up on the second floor.
Whatever for those accuracy I'm all. Can you get this one to burn me? Put it right here in front of the. You just help yourself, you just help yourself. We won't be told we transfer. Mr. Caldwell, I haven't spoken to you.
How are you?
Good to be here.
There was a potential. None of that recommendation.
That was very plain description. We're gonna go back and drive. When you when you give up at hour clock, she'll go back and drive. Right on three A.M. Only four hours I'm gonna be clear. Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, that's that's the good thing place that I've had. Which I agree. I got ready Saturday morning. It wasn't true. It's just that does funny stuff to you. Well, that was Saturday morning I had made your announcement. I thought you got those things from your mind. Yeah, that can.
Come on in, grab a seat. There are plentiful. That's right.
Come right in, good to see you, sir. Good to see you ladies.
Jobs can be all good. I'm gonna have to keep them separated now. They're gonna be on the freeway. You've been driving.
Tony was so kind, she just said that she always offered him whatever he would give. Flair's Flair don't take no.
You gonna make this over again? Tommy said U car, but you're not old enough for U cars.
Oh, I am. Not nearly I am.
In a flash.
Well, we'd like to thank you.
That's right. That's right.
That U car presentation is a good team.
It really is. It's used quite a lot too, so.
That's a good thing.
James, James. Did you have any of those links to those surveys? I know I have one for the teacher survey you did earlier. Do you have both? You still have those links into the?
I think I think either of them may be before you do this when I get home.
Okay. I'll shoot you a text, I'll see if I can get that and see if you. Tomorrow on that webinar they think I said, well, I know we have one. And I said I can just find the results. I will just kinda share it off with the other boys to see how that how that pre-survey looks. I have a link for the teacher one, I don't have one for the parent one. And then they'll just add it to the, no, we're not gonna go through those, add it to the.
You need that when you go to.
Yeah, I'll review that. And I'll revise what I'm using tomorrow. We'll use it, we'll use it for for that. Come present, yeah, tomorrow. Eleven, eleven to twelve is what it is tomorrow's story. Should have a link, yeah. If not, I can send you one out.
Tonight, I'll put it out tonight, why don't you send it out.
Okay.
You got my corporate, the State Farm, that's the place to send it.
Okay. Okay. I can use you.
Yeah, you did send it out.
It's from eleven to twelve tomorrow. Send that, send that out. We got about seventy-five people registered, which is all yet. I'm gonna. Yeah, this is just for board members.
Ms. Platt, good to see you.
Good to see you. Certainly appreciate your such solid.
You're very kind, thank you. I appreciate this man right here. He he is the most forgiving and roteous understanding person in the world. Well, that's what I like about him. Rodeo guy. He's good, he he got the job. He got some. Okay, this is Tony Hiller, she's principal, Tommy Ray, and Sarah Selman. And this is Kate, since the new general assignment reporter or special week. Okay. Yeah, he's on the school beat and then very shows he's doing a great job.
Yeah, I know she does say more than that. Oh, yeah, thank you. They cleaned up around, so it sounded like everybody. I figured he didn't come up and clean this. I would be worried if some of that was up in there.
Man, have a seat, please, folks. Make yourself comfortable.
Everybody, everybody just get really nice to each other. Well, we won't have this problem.
All right, at this time, we'll call the meeting of the Warren County School Board to order. We want to welcome everybody who's joining us today and for those who are watching online. I want to follow along, tonight's agenda can be found at our website, warrenschools.com, under the Board tab and then under Meetings. Can I get a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
Motion.
A motion by Mr. Judkins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Zekman. Any discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yeah.
Any opposed? All right, at this time, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And we're asking Phil Zekman to lead us in the pledge.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I got my new knee joint. It's it's been here for one week. And I remember what Jesus said about putting new wine in old bottles. Sometimes it doesn't work too good, but 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 right now, if I can just get straightened up, okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion for approval of tonight's consent agenda?
Somebody, Mr. Caldwell.
A motion by Mr. Caldwell.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bass. Any discussion on tonight's consent agenda? All in favor, say yes.
Yeah.
Any opposed? All right. Moving on, there's no public comment tonight, so we'll move on to student advisory report. All right, we've got our students, or students, students. So we'll ask them, you can stand right there and give their report.
So for our sports news, the Pioneer football team had their first game last Friday, and they look forward to a successful team, a successful season. The J R O T C, they started off with their first, no, they started off with their Raiders' Raider season in Bull Swing. Their preseason began on June twenty-fourth with conditioning and technical skill training, such as the rope bridge. Cross Country had their first meet today at Coffee County, we are waiting on the results. They have twenty-three athletes participating in cross-country. Female soccer, they have played three district games, they've lost one and tied two. Now on to club news. Beta Club in June members were announced as winners of the following national competitions. Third place, small group talent, and sixth place, moving literature. Blood Student Union, members have worked so hard to pick officers and explain to people why B S U is an important club. This upcoming school year, there are plans to take educational field trips. Book Club, they've had a great first meeting with twenty-four students in attendance, and they're very welcome to new members and looking forward to a great year of reading. Club Rush, the event was very organized and received well by the student body. The students mingled one with one another and very curious about all the clubs at W C H S. S E C L A had the first meeting this afternoon, the coffee shop should open in September for students. F F A Club has two members who qualify for their American F F A degree and will receive and will receive their honor in October at the National F F A Convention. Host of the club, a record high number of signups, there's a large interest in that club, and our student population must be very interested in the medical field. Moving on to mock trial. Their team gets its case in late November and the Tennessee Bar Association's, sorry. The team will get its case in late November from the Tennessee Bar Association, so the club will be preparing for the release of the case around Thanksgiving. And last, Student Council, they will be provided a back-to-school bagel bar for teachers, and they will also, they also have an election for freshman class officers. Now moving on to arts, arts news. Color Guard, the team spent the summer practicing and had two full weeks of band camp. They are almost entirely a team of new individuals who have been learning new skills and are excited to represent Warren County High School. Select Assemble, the ensemble was invited to sing at Epcot's Candlelight Processional in December. Pioneer Pro Band, the band's twenty twenty-four marching show is entitled Red, White, and Blues, a Tribute to Jazz and Dance. It features several band members as soloists, as well as singer-partnerette Maya Williams as a solo dancer. This is the largest the band has ever been in over a quarter century. Their competitive, the competitive season will begin in mid-December. Moving on to class news. For one of the classes, the students have been working hard and getting hands-on experience by beautifying the school's landscape. Now on to Student Advisory Committee from our principal meeting. The phone policy has been accepted well, fewer phones have been going off in class and students are more focused, and Mr. Hobbs is very happy with the policy. Lunchrooms are crowded and the microwaves are in place with most of the crowding. There's a possibility of expressing an express line for microwave, microwave users who don't need as much time as of like a minute or so, more than like a five minute. A new schedule has been welcomed, and Mr. Hobbs says that it's been going very well. Concerns with Mr. Hobbs is still addressing is A.P. testing with the new schedule, since it's supposed to be testing in the spring with A.P. classes going on now that will end in the fall. And also obtaining blinds for the cosmetology classroom.
Any questions for for the Advisory Council of One here? Harper did a great job in her first meeting in a big crowd.
Absolutely. I just want to say, you know, talked to a couple of the sponsors on the Club Rush and talked about how the students mingled one with another, and I just want to, you know, come back to board policy on the phone policy, and they said they thought this was a great, you know, one of the things we we we, one of the benefits of this was that, and and the host of the club had a record high number of signups, and we knew that was going to be one of the benefits as well, that there should be record numbers of of signups for different clubs. And so I just want to thank, I want to thank Mr. Hobbs and all the students for for being patient with this and and seeing it through, and the benefits are coming and more and more over time, so.
Just to introduce to the board also Colin Tether of Indiana. They they're gonna go back to the practice of having one sit with the board at each meeting, and so you all can ask them questions and they can provide input. And Dr. Hargis is also the sponsor, she's taken over this year, so she's joining us as well, so. Oh, I know this board, and I feel the same way, when the kids and students are here, it's it's enjoyable to have them, so we're glad to have you guys. Welcome, Colin.
I I just would say compliments to to the students who, hopefully with the new cellphone limitations, the students will be more engaged with each other and and maybe some of the clubs that needed some revitalization can get back in there. I'm particularly happy to see that mock trial is is set up, gonna get its case in late November. That mock trial program, I think, is an important compliment to our regular curriculum, because it teaches in a very hands-on and immediate way the the vital importance of critical and analytical thinking and knowing what constitutes real evidence, separating the fact from fish fiction. And just one last thing on Pioneer Battalion Junior R O T C. If you've never seen that rope bridge thing, if if you haven't seen it, you need to make it a point. It is impressive. And our Warren County Pioneer Battalion has really earned some high marks in competition with the rope bridge and a lot of other things. But if you haven't seen it, you need to see it, you couldn't believe that could be done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, anything else for our student advisory? All right, we will move on to recognitions. All right, so Kim Cravens is here from, she is the Upper Cumberland District Director, and she's also the Putnam County Board of Education Chair. And she's here to present this board with an award, and so I'll ask her to stand up. If you want to do that, that'd be great.
I'll just stay right here.
I'm not sure you could go anywhere.
Bigger room coming.
There you go.
Well, thank you for having me tonight. Love hearing the student stuff, that was awesome, so, oh, great job there for sure. So, thank you Chairman Koch and members of the board, Superintendent Swallows. It's my privilege to be here tonight to present you with the T S B A Board of Distinction Award. This award is one of T S B A's most prestigious awards. I commend your board for meeting the requirements in four key areas, planning, policy, promotion, and board development. As you know, the requirements are extensive, and not every board qualifies as a Board of Distinction. However, this board is among those select few, and on behalf of the Tennessee School Board Association, I'm proud to present the Board of Distinction Award to the Warren County Board of Education. So, congratulations. I know personally it is not easy to get this, it does take a lot of work and effort on behalf of the board, so I know that they have have done a lot of work to do this, and you all should be proud of them for for getting this award, so.
All right, so why don't you present that to Chairman Koch, and we'll get a, maybe we'll get a picture of everybody at the end.
At the end of the meeting, okay, that'll work.
Sarah, you want to take a picture real quick?
How are we gonna do that?
And board members, just please don't.
Thank you for having me.
Don't run off at the end, because we want to get a picture of everybody.
Well, I'm running. No more, no more trouble highway back, so, thank you very much.
Good to see you, good to see you, Kim.
All right, moving on.
All right, I have the distinct honor of a couple of recognitions. First of all, I want to say thank you to two amazing board members. That will be, this will be their last meeting. They've sat on my left and right for the past year, and I I can't thank them enough for what they've done for me as a board member. I mean, I've only been here for two years, but what they've left inside of me has been amazing. And I first want to present Tonya Bass with this recognition for twelve years of service, Warren County Board of Education, and what you've done for me personally, always sitting next to me for the last two years. It's just always been a comfort every time I look around and see you there. So what you've, what you've done for this county, this school system, all the staff, all the kids, is is just unbelievable. And I know each and every person is thankful for this. Everyone in your area and Reverend College in Eastside is thankful for your service. Again, we can't say thank you enough for all your hard work and for all your dedication to Warren County Schools, to our staff, and to this board and what you brought to it, so. Got one more. Mr. Zekman, I'm gonna present you, we want to thank you again for the past sixteen years of your service to not only the school board, to Warren County Schools, to its staff and its students, and to Warren County in general. You're one of the greatest ambassadors of Warren County and Warren County Schools that ever been here. And what you've, what you mean to me, you don't realize that, you know, the 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 stuff that you've taught me in the last two years of of being a board member and what being an advocate for public schools is all about. And you are the true advocate for public schools all around. There's one, as Tommy always says, Bill Zekman's forgot more about being a school board member than we'll ever let know. And for your past sixteen years of service to this community, to this school board, to Warren County Schools and its staff and its students, it's second to none. So we want to present you with this.
Thank you. Way to be step up there. You don't get this unless you're going off the board. And you got a few more hours back in your month too, that's something else.
Phil, you gotta smile.
I'm doing my best. Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I I will say this very briefly, it has been, it has been a tremendous honor. That's pretty heavy new stuff.
It used to be.
But it but it has been a tremendous honor to serve with this board and to serve Warren County, our students, the teachers, support personnel, all the people who make the Warren County School System, in my opinion, one of the best in in America. One of the, one of the distinguishing things is Kim still, Kim, Kim, she's she's on Highway Seventy-S now. One of the distinguishing things about this board is that I have not found a single board member who has any agenda other than doing what's best for the students. And that just means the world to me, knowing that there's no covert agenda, nothing personal. You're here to do what's best for the students. And I I trust that will always continue, so I wish you all the very best. And I'm in your corner, if you need anything. I wish Jarvis, Jarvis Johnson, the best, he'll be taking this, unless they reshuffle the seats. Again, congratulate Jarvis on his win in the election. Wish you all the best, and if there's anything at all I can do, just let me know. So, thank you all so much.
Can I have just just a second?
Absolutely.
My name is Ron Lee, I served on the county commission, first district. When he decided to go for school board, I fell in his place to take his place and been there ever since. Thank goodness you're friends like him. But he goes way back, my father served as an alderman in the mid-eight, early to mid-eighties. My sister Carol was her first female county executive. He served on the court with her, and he's been a dear friend of mine, and we've burnt each other's ears for the last sixteen years in the hope to continue to do it. And I just, from the Lee family, we really appreciate Bill Zekman. He's a dear friend of his family and hard to beat.
Absolutely. Thank you, that's very kind of you, thank you.
Well, I can never match Bill's speech, as we all know. Phil, I love serving with you and everyone here. I came in twelve years ago with very, very little knowledge, and so I just encourage anybody that's in TV land, if you're interested in public service, do it. You learn so much, and everything we have done has been for the student staff, and I just thank you again.
I will say no doubt that Warren County Schools are better because of these two people right here, and I will say that from now on, and I will forever indebted to both of you guys for your services to this county and the physical system. Thank you, so, and I'll talk more about that in just a second, but we have some Employees of the Year to recognize, so I'm gonna ask David Vandergriff, and people come, we usually do it up there, but come back here. So David was selected as the Employee of the Month. He was nominated by Dr. Bennett and Kathy Hooton and Jennifer Ritchie. I'll read what was written at that time. This was way back in July of twenty-three, I believe. Said during construction this summer at W C M S, David made sure that my staff and I had access to our building. He made keys for Miss Hooton and I so we could come through the back gate in order to work from our offices. And all summer long, we would see David working outside doing various jobs at W C M S during the paving phase of construction. Needless to say, the weather was extremely hot or storming all summer long, and David was always on site. Recently, we had a water line break at our building, and David knew it before we even realized it. He turned the water off before any damage could be done in our office, and he told us that we did not have access to the restroom until he could fix it. And David also informed the annex they had no restroom access and made arrangements for the students to use the bathroom at W C M S. He worked on the water leak himself and repaired it quickly, and we were able to have our water turned back on within about an hour. David's a hard worker, and my staff and I just want to express our appreciation to him, and that was from the staff at Warren Connect. But since that time, David moved on from the middle school project, and he's been over here, and he's been at Centertown, and he's been at Eastside, he's been all, at lots of different places working, and those projects have all turned out really well because of David's leadership. And so we are proud to name him the Warren County Schools Employee of the Year, so. Let's smile for a picture here. All right, there's also a one hundred dollar gift certificate that'll be added to your next paycheck.
Thank you.
Not what you're worth, but it'll help you.
And I'd like to say one thing, I was on county commission with Mr. Zekman for twelve years. He was on the education committee. I learned a lot through working with him on the county commission. I thank you for all your hard work, thank you, Tony. I know it's a job y'all, it's unappreciated. Thank you.
Obviously, obviously, we all like each other in here. Obviously, we all like each other in here. But, but I have seen David on the county commission basically work political magic. He's, he's got a brain. He's not only conscientious in his work, he knows how to do it. And David, I got to tell you, those middle school teachers really depended on you. I never shared with you how much they were dependent on you during construction, but you made a difference, so.
Thank you.
All right. Our employee of the year, the certified, is Ms. Regina. I forgot your name because you retired. Because your grandson is also ready to go home. So, you're good. You're doing great. It's our fault, not yours. So, you will remember, I think it was just last month, we recognized her as employee of the month, and she was nominated by Ms. Bonnie Hillis, the principal at Bobby Ray. I'll read really quickly what she wrote. And I don't know how she got through it without crying, but maybe I will be able to do the same thing. "Few employees have devoted their life to the students of Warren County like Regina Woodley has over the last 35-plus years. Beginning as a speech teacher traveling among various schools, to settling at Centertown where she served as a fifth grade, an ESL, and an RTI teacher, she touched countless students. The last 10 years, she's worked tirelessly at Bobby Ray as the instructional coordinator, influencing masses of students as she coached and trained their teachers, oversaw testing, and touched every aspect of the school from budgets to discipline and instruction. She has impacted school growth and scores, but most importantly, has influenced the people she's worked with, loved our students, and been a resource and a friend to all. Without a doubt, Regina is deserving of the employee of the month, but is so, she is so much more than that. She is irreplaceable. As employees retire and replacements are sought, there are some whose influence has been so profound that they cannot be restored. Her morning greeting of 'Welcome to Bobby Ray, the best school in Warren County' will ring hollow without her this fall, and I will truly be lost without my friend, confidant, and right arm. Please honor her with this, with this, please honor her with this distinction for her lifetime of work and service." So, Ms. Hillis, we've gone above and beyond. Not only did we honor her for employee of the month, but we're proud to make Regina Woodley our employee of the year. Congratulations. All right, and it's the same thing, $100 on her next paycheck, but she doesn't get a next paycheck. We're just going to keep it. Well, she's already got it. Well, that's no fair. All right, so what we typically do at this point is take a pause for anybody that would like to move on, but you are welcome to stay with us the rest of the afternoon, the rest of the evening. You have to stay. All right, Collins. Right here and right.
Congratulations. Good to see you. Thank you. 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 We have any standees? We have seats.
It's been a pleasure. All right, moving on to facilities and resources. Yeah, so I'm going to start this by asking Justin Scott. Justin's here from the city of McMinnville, and he wanted the honor to be able to address the board about a decision you made recently, and so I'll let Justin speak about that.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm Justin Scott, Director of Parks and Recreation for the city of McMinnville. I wanted to personally come and thank the board for your approval in partnering with the city on the tinsicle project. I do not enjoy building tinsports. I'll just go ahead and say it. We did, we built the upper two courts in 2018, and I'm working with engineers and my head of maintenance in Tinsley Asphalt now to get that process going. We're about three weeks out from, we've demoed, but we're about three weeks out from really starting the work on that. But I personally wanted to come and thank you all for, for your partnering with us. It meant a lot to, it means a lot to me as the director of parks, you know, wanting to provide a, a good playing surface for the, for the middle school and high school, which we do provide. But, you know, if you, if you, if you come around our complex, you see what we, what we've done with our ball fields, with our soccer fields, we take pride in the athletics, and we want to, we want to make sure that anybody that comes out or comes to our city notices that. And so, again, it was more than anything, I felt it was appropriate for me to come and thank you guys personally. I really appreciate it, so, thank you.
We appreciate that partnership.
Thanks for the partnership for helping us.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
It's reciprocal.
Thank you. All right, David, do you want to talk about construction?
Sure. The construction updates for this month, the employee center here is getting real close to being finished. If you haven't walked through it, you need to. The clinic has already moved in and operating. Today was its first full day, and I'm assuming everything went well. I hadn't heard anything.
We haven't heard anything. It didn't go well either, so.
No, it was good. That's right.
Yeah, yeah. They did come and do a final punch list on the addition to, to get some last minute things straightened out and done, and work has already started to, to get all that finished. The fire marshal did come and inspect the sprinkler system and gave an okay on that, so we're good on that. We're good to move in as soon as all of this little paint scratches and stuff like that gets, gets finished. And, and again, like I said, it's really coming together. Centertown, the addition out there, last month, I talked about that it was getting real close. It's, it's mainly complete. We're just waiting for the fire marshal to give a, a final CO. They keep giving us temporaries. Grant asked me about it the other day. The, what the problem is, is the, the contractor that done the, the fire system, fire alarm system, it still has several devices off of the old system that needs to be taken out and removed and all that, and, and they're, they're still working on that. That's the holdup there. The high school annex that we started, we now have sheet rock. We're finishing the sheet rock. We're, we're getting real close to, to putting all that together. We've got siding on, we've got roof on, we're fixing the safety air condition. I talked to my HVAC guy, Ricky Cagle, today, and we're, we're getting ready to start that. In fact, they may start that tomorrow. We'll get that going, and basically, it just needs to be finished. It's, it's all there and everything, and it's just, needs to be finished. We, the basement project at West Elementary has now started. A lot of demo has been done, and, and I was told that the material to start construction is actually supposed to be there tomorrow or the next day, just in the next few days. If you don't really know what we're planning on doing, that basement with, it, it used to be one big playroom, and we're going to divide that up into three classrooms and put a set of bathrooms down there so that she can have some extra classroom space. The, the next thing is the awning at the middle school that, that blew down back in a windstorm that we had a year or so ago. It's finally been put up, and, and it's up and looks good, and everything's covered from one building to the next. So, I was personally glad to get that off of the list. And the new door lock project that we've been going on, I think all buildings have been somewhat done now. They were at my office today, and I think that was the last building, but there's, there's still a few that we, we're going to have to change up because of the way that, you know, the key ain't on one side of the door or the other or whatever. And then there's some that's got to be rekeyed for different places, but for the most part, it, it's complete. And that's all.
Massive project.
It was. It was a big project.
Long overdue.
Lot of door locks.
What about it, Diddle, David, don't access from the exterior doors? Let one of the teachers take their students out? I know they were, I've had a couple of teachers bring that.
That has been discussed, but nothing has actually been finalized on that.
So, the goal, the goal behind that, I'll interrupt you. The goal behind it was to limit lock access to the outside.
Exactly.
Because we got, as the school system grows and gets older, there's more keys that get out there. And so, what we've tried to do is to try to limit the access from the outside building, it was outside locks with a key and go with the, with the fob system. What we found as we've gone through that is that, like we do in anything, is that that sounds good on paper, but in actual, actuality, it may not work that well. So, I think that's what he's talking about.
Yeah, that's some of those extra that we're going to have to change up, isn't it?
Yeah, I just thought that was the teachers, you know, just having to radio in for, for a TA to let the student in and use the restroom or something.
We've ran across a lot of those situations, you know, that, like, if a teacher takes kids out for a fire drill or whatever, you know.
Exactly. Or if you're on a roof checking for a gas leak.
Exactly.
And there's no place for a key to get back in. You're in real trouble. I can attest to that personally.
Yes, yes.
Bringing the ladder.
Yeah. Just a ladder. David, the, the situation with that surface water management over at Bobby Ray, I happened to be at the registration or induction, whatever you call it, the regist, the initial registration, and we had rain that day. And I, I connect those two things because we had, we had some backflow from the surface water drains, or it could have been the roof drains, in the pre-K area at Bobby Ray. And I think Ms. Hillis said, Ms. Hillis, okay, I know that she worked with you.
Yes.
And she appreciates your work. Do we have something like a permanent solution to that problem?
Well, I think what the actual problem was, and we have changed it, but there was, during that construction of that building over there, the downspouts from the roof got put back into that plumbing system that went under the building. We had, we had taken them out before because of evidently that same situation. And when they got put back in there, they, it, that reoccurred, and we took them back out and, and just let them drain out on the pavement, and we haven't had a rain since then, so I'm, I'm not sure that that's.
We need.
Yes, but we are looking at everything that we possibly can, can try to figure out what's, what's causing that.
Well, Ms. Hillis was, was complimentary of you and your crew getting, getting on it instantly, and, but it was a problem.
It was, yes. It was. It was a, a big problem.
But I appreciate your work on that.
Anything else? Thank you. All right, moving on to operations reports. Turn it over to Dr. Fallow. All right, thank you. I, I do want to say before we get into operations that not only to Ms. Bass and Mr. Zekman who are leaving, anytime a new board comes on, the old board goes off. It'll be a different makeup, and so I don't know that, I hope that you all have heard me say this publicly many times, but I've been in different school systems, and I've seen the way school boards work. And I just want to thank all six of you for putting the students and the employees of this county first in your work. And you have done that, and you need to be recognized for two years as a board, working together for the betterment, and all the accomplishments that you all have been able to say that you've been able to do as a board for our employees in our schools, is for our employees' record salary increases. All, we've been fortunate to be able to have extra funding to be able to do that, but you're the ones that have made that happen. Your foresight with policies and the different things that you bring up every month has been second to none. And so, I am personally grateful, but I also get to speak for the school system, and I get to say, on behalf of all the employees, all the students, we are grateful for all six of you. And you've set the bar really high, because I think you all have worked so well together. I wrote down, you've been thoughtful, you've been responsive, and you've been consistent. And so, Stephen Kobe is a famous author that said, "It's generally been my experience that the very top people of truly great organizations are servant leaders," and that's what you all have been. And so, from my, from me and our employees, thank you all for what you've done.
That's very nice. Thank you.
All right, so we also have a, some citizens here with us, lots of folks, but, that are here to talk about the McMinnville Airport Hangar 7 classroom facility. And so, Derek Rowe is the name that's listed on the agenda. I'm not exactly sure who's going to talk, but we're going to let them stand up and have a few minutes to talk about their presentation. So, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. And thank you to the board for giving us a little time to talk to you and hopefully explain to you what the plan is for this program. So, just a quick introduction. My name is Derek Rowe. I am a high school teacher in Tullahoma City Schools, Tullahoma High School, and light inch aviation technology. I've been doing that now for the past 10 years. This is my fourth year at Tullahoma and six years at McGavick High School in Nashville. I was approached by these wonderful gentlemen who have newly formed Chapter 1700 of the Experimental Aircraft Association, which is a national and international organization looking after experimental aircraft. They understand the importance of career and technical education, and particularly because of their background, aviation. And they approached me to work with them, and I thanked them for that, to put together this educational program. I'm just going to read through some notes I've got so I don't miss anything, but then I'm going to interject that with, with personal examples. So, I'm here today to highlight the critical importance of establishing an aviation program at Warren County Schools. At Warren County Veterans Memorial Airport for our high school students, the program will be offered at no cost to the district, providing a unique and valuable opportunity for our students to explore the world of aviation. Research and studies have shown that aviation programs can have a significant positive impact on student achievement and academic success. For instance, the Michigan Department of Education Career and Technical Education Accountability System found that students who participated in aviation programs had higher graduation rates, post-secondary enrollment rates compared to non-CTU students. This indicates that CTE programs, including aviation education, can significantly, significantly contribute to student success. Furthermore, a study conducted by Purdue University revealed that students who participate in flight education programs demonstrate superior critical thinking, problem-solving, and decision-making skills compared to their peers. This highlights the importance of aviation education in cultivating valuable skills that can lead to an academic achievement and success in various fields, and that's borne by my experience with my students. So, over the past 10 years, my graduation, my graduation rates for my students, aviation students, is at 100% graduation rate, with an average of, grade point average of a two to three-point increase over the course of the program. And the reason for that is career and technical, technical education obviously shows students the importance of their core subject learning and how to put that into practical skills ready for the workforce, which is one of the most important things for students to learn these days. Over my 10 years' career, obviously, I follow students very closely about what they do after high school. The university rate, on average over 10 years, is, for four-year university, 35% of students go on to four-year university. Another 35% go on to a two-year associate degree program, and the rest go straight into the workforce, either into the military or apprenticeships, or straight into the And the rest go straight into the workforce, either into the military or apprenticeships, um, or straight into the workforce. Some of my successes, um, I have at the moment of my graduates, uh, 17 who fly for the military in some degree or another, um, fast jet in the Air Force, Marines, Navy, and helicopter pilots in the Army. And, um, I've got 64 students who have either gone to MTSU Aerospace or graduated and another large number going to other universities around the country. Um, so that's my specific, uh, experience with high school students. Um, I'll go on to say now, and I'll read from this so I don't miss anything again. While specific numerical data may vary, the overall trend suggests that aviation programs can positively impact student achievements and academic success. By offering an aviation program at Warren County Veterans Memorial Airport, we have the opportunity to provide our students with a unique and enriching education experience that can pave the way for future success. Additionally, the inclusion of a program at the airport will provide our students with hands-on learning experience in real-world settings, allowing them to apply classroom knowledge to practical situations. This experiential learning opportunity can enhance student engagement, motivation, and interest in STEM, leading to improved academic performance and skills development. Through the establishment of an aviation program, we can empower our students to explore their passions and interests, cultivate valuable skills, and prepare for future academic career success. The program will not only serve as a gateway to the aviation industry, but as a platform for personal and professional growth, fostering leadership, teamwork, and critical thinking skills that are essential for the academic, for academic achievement and success in the 21st century. In conclusion, I ask the Warren County School Board to consider the establishment of an aviation program at Warren County Veterans Memorial Airport for our high school students. This initiative has the potential not only to enhance student learning, engagement, but also to equip our students with valuable skills and experience that can contribute to academic achievement and future success. Um, I would like to add as well, um, that part of the program at the airport, uh, uh, at the airport, in fact, one of the most important parts of it was, or is the fact that we are going to align the program at Warren County with TCAT, um, um, who has an aviation program in Winchester at the moment. And we at Tullahoma, um, High School will be duly enrolled with those starting, hopefully, in the spring semester. They've had a few problems with, um, FAA approval, only for the fact, unfortunately, two of their instructors died, which was horrible. Um, and also MTSU Aerospace on the Professional Pilot Program. Um, so as well as high school credits, students have the opportunity to earn early college credit. And as well as that, um, the students will be, um, inspired to join aviation, um, CTSO, Skills USA, uh, and also, um, aviation, uh, programs such as EAA, Experimental Aircraft Association, and AOPA, which is the Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association, and other programs who have quite wonderful educational outreach programs to support their learning and to enhance their learning. Other than that, we will also be organizing field trips, uh, internships, externships, and guest speakers to immerse the students in aviation. Thank you very much for your time. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Well, I want to add, because I, I did get to listen to Mr. Rowe at the, at the Newton, uh, luncheon a couple of months ago. And this is more, this program is more than just pilot and flying. There's a lot of the mechanics part of it. There's, there's so many more opportunities than just someone that's interested in flying and airplanes and this and that. So you get into the aircraft mechanics and it opens up so many more opportunities. Uh, and I, I just want to thank you for your time. And this, this is a, I think it's an exciting program that would be well received by, uh, our students and our community. I know it's something that's, that's new and, uh, interesting, but, you know, as a board, we've, uh, we've proven ourselves to be bold. So, I mean, I, if there's anything positive that for our students and student success, I'm all for it.
And these will be high-paying jobs.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, these are out, right out of the gate jobs that are, you know.
Can I, can I just, um, add the, the facilities that, um, we're going to be building at the airport? Um, we're going to be building a, a 10,000-square-foot hangar, um, which measures 100 foot by 100 foot. And, um, it's going to be furnished with classrooms, meeting rooms, and, um, offices. It's also going to be equipped with, um, everything required to accommodate, um, high school students and, and also middle school students, you know. Obviously, this is aimed at high school students, uh, for, for their future career prospects. But we are starting, as, as a school, as an educational institute, we're starting to realize now that we need to recruit, uh, students younger. And, uh, in fact, nationally, we're even going back now to elementary schools, um, to, um, recruit the, the students as they come up into the high school. Uh, the facilities are going to be state-of-the-art. And as you pointed out, quite rightly, thank you for that. Um, it's not only piloting, um, it's going to be an aviation technology program, which will cover the entire, uh, spectrum of aviation, from professional piloting to, um, mechanics, aviation power plant, um, administration, air traffic control, drones, UAS, which is a big thing, and, and for your programs at school, for your ag science programs, um, and, uh, first responder programs, um, it's, it's all relative as far as drones, UAS are concerned.
I think it's, uh, certainly a great thing for all of our kids in all, in, in high school and working at both to have the opportunity to take this program. I think it's something, anytime that we can expand, and what this board has done many times, to give our students another opportunity to do something new.
Yeah.
I think this is wonderful. And with y'all, it's not, no cost to us, and with y'all willing to do this to help our kids. This community is outstanding.
In Tullahoma City Schools, um, this is year two of the, the flight program. So my students fly in-school time now, um, with our flight schools. And we have, uh, 22 students who are on their private pilot's course at the moment. And they'll graduate with a private pilot from high school and also drone Part 107. So they'll graduate with, um, industry certifications.
Uh, let, let me just say, uh, Mr. Chairman, Derek, thank you for coming and bringing this program. Um, one of, one of the things that we need, it looks like the, uh, Experimental Aircraft Association's newest chapter, 1700. I don't think there's been another chapter after ours, has there?
No, we capped it at that.
You capped it, okay. So, so we will be the last. Uh, um, one of the things I think we need, and I've, I've talked to, uh, I've talked to Mr. Rowe in the past about this. And I really love the enthusiasm and the energy and, and brilliant ideas that, uh, these aviators bring to us. We need community support. Uh, we need, if, if parents and students and grandparents and aunts and uncles think this is a good thing for Warren County, I happen to believe it's a great thing for Warren County, a wonderful opportunity, an opportunity not to be missed, uh, they need to manifest that support. And I think a phone call or a text message or an email to Dr. Swallows or to Ms. Cantrell. We have, we have a professional person who is interfacing and communications with the community. But if you think this is good, let the school leadership know about it. This is a, this is a community-wide project. This is not just, uh, EAA and Warren County Schools. This is a community-wide project. So.
I want to add one more thing to Mr. Rowe. He's said his stuff a little bit short. He's not just a freelance pilot here. Could you go into a little bit more of your detail of your pilot in, in your career?
Uh, yeah. Um, I started flying, um, as a British Army helicopter pilot. Um, I was in the Army for 13, uh, 17 years, piloting, uh, for 13 of those years. And the last helicopter I flew was an Apache, which of course we bought from the Americans.
Uh, he, he flew, uh, he flew air ambulance at Medevac?
Yeah. When I retired from the Army, I flew air ambulance, um, for, for most of my civilian career, actually. I actually came here 11 years ago to be chief pilot of an air ambulance. Unfortunately, that didn't work out. Um, and, uh, that's why I've been a high school teacher for the past 10 years. Um, and.
And I would say it fortunately didn't work out.
Well, well, yes, absolutely. Um, but at the time.
The reason it didn't work out was not fortunate, though.
At, at the time, it wasn't fortunate, I can assure you. I'd only been in America for two months.
Yeah.
And sadly, I had a heart attack and triple bypass surgery, so you can't fly like that. You can now. I'm flying again now, quite frankly. And, uh, um, and as a welcome to America, um, last year I was, uh, inducted into the Tennessee Aviation Hall of Fame for services to youth aviation.
Congratulations.
I'm British. We don't, we don't really like to.
Well, let everybody know, if, if this moves forward, we're in, in really good hands, you know, it's not a.
Kelly's good.
Kelly Bassam. I am Airport Commissioner. I want to tell everybody we're real excited for the potential of this program. The aviation industry is in serious need of lots of people, yes, airline transport pilots. We need air traffic controllers. We need controllers. We need programmers. We need air, uh, airport managers. I desperately need, uh, airframe and power plant mechanics and aviation inspectors. This program will get all of your students on their way to those certifications. And if TCAT gets their program to go, they already have an AMP on staff. If they can get that program off the ground, some of these kids can walk out of high school with a diploma and AMP and start out close to six figures a year.
Right.
Thank you.
Love it. Thank you, Kelly.
And it's gonna take a lot of fundraising that we're committed to, you know.
So I appreciate the fact that you all have all committed to be here tonight. I, I would say to the board that, uh, Tracy Rice and Gurus, oh, right there she is. So I think Tracy attended one of the meetings in July, uh, with the group. Uh, and so as a school goes, we, you know, we are one of the leaders in CTE. And so we do a lot of things and offer a lot of things. Uh, so when we do that, we, when we shift, we, we need to make sure that everything fits together with where we are. So, uh, an important part of CTE is making sure that we provide for our community what it needs. Uh, and so if aviation is the area that we need to go into with this board's blessing, then we can start talking about the Xs and the Os of that, uh, to figure out exactly what that looks like. Um, I, I'm interested to know what it would look like at the hangar, uh, construction, all that kind of stuff. So again, with this board's blessing, we'll just begin to have those conversations and talk through that and figure out how we can make it happen for everybody.
Just like to ask Ms. Ryder, she's a student at that's, the aviation, what she thinks.
Um, so back in July, um, I took my youngest flight. So me and Travis Backston flew four hours to Missouri. And I am competing for a scholarship with them, um, to go to MTSU, um, and become a pilot one day. And I think this is a great opportunity for more students to get involved in this. And they will be more interested in coming to school and learning about all of this and learning about all of the technology and everything that goes into aviation. And I think it is a great opportunity for our county to be able to get to do something like this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't. I mean, I don't think, I think you voiced your support. There doesn't need to be any official motion, because really what we'd need to do is be able to come together and work with them. And then if we need to, uh, have anything in official business, we can bring it back to you.
Absolutely.
We need to put this on the agenda for the workshop.
I, I don't know that we can be able to get it turned around that quickly, but, uh, it's something. Of course, again, kids have already signed up for courses this year, so it's gonna have to be a work in progress as we go. And, uh, we, we'll be happy to.
If it helps the board, um, the, the proposed timeframe for this, as far as we're concerned, because there's a lot of processes to go through, both FAA T dot aeronautics and, and the airport and the building, et cetera. It would be a nice to have for the 25, 26 school year. That, that would be working very hard and everything falling into place. A more realistic timeframe is going to be, uh, the following school year. So that, that gives plenty of time for everybody. And if we can turn it around quicker than that, that'll be a blessing for the students. But, uh, we don't want to rush it and to.
Tell them your proposed estimate of money we got to raise and put in.
So the proposed cost, not that, not that, the, the board needs to worry about that, um, is between $700,000 and $1 million. Um, that, that will give us the, the hangar with all of the facilities in the hangar. Plus, it's going to be fully equipped, um, to represent all disciplines that is going to be teaching them. And also for the, for the staff that's staffed as well, and professional development for the staff.
And the county court will probably have to approve this too, so, uh, they have to. They're the overseers of the airport commission. So if y'all have any contacts with anybody on the airport commission, you might let them know the county commission.
All right. Well, we appreciate you guys so much. Thanks for being here. Thank you all. Thank you. Sure. You're welcome to stay. We have several items to go on the agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. So in continuing with our, um, spotlights of our schools, I think you all enjoyed hearing from our schools last year. Uh, we didn't want to go in the same order, uh, so that, you know, kind of divide it up. And so, uh, we went to the middle of the alphabet and Hickory Creek won the August sweepstakes. So, uh, Ms. Rachel Graves is here to talk about what's going on in Hickory Creek. And so I will turn it over to her and let her, uh, take over from here.
So the past few years, we've created a video to do this, um, but I think we went a little later in the year. So when we started compiling our videos and photos, it was a lot of the same things you saw last year. So tonight, you just get me, sorry. But, um, I'm just here to tell you a little bit about Hickory Creek and some of the things that we have going on. Um, each day at Hickory Creek, we're blessed to serve over 600 students with our over 100 staff members there. We begin every one of our days with statements that commit us to excellence and positivity. Our students do the pledge, and then you will hear every single one of them, they think it's just the second half of the pledge, to say, "I will act in a way that I'll be proud of myself and others will be proud of me too. I came to school to learn. I will learn, and I will have a good day." That's just how we start every single day. And you see that carried out in our building, um, through the actions of our staff and our students alike. Over the past year, we've seen our students grow a lot academically, and we're very proud of that. Our teachers and our educational assistants work tirelessly to ensure that every student within our walls receives an equal opportunity to receive some fabulous teaching. We are proud to say that our testing data this year showed that we are moving closer to our achievement goals every day in Hickory Creek. Just some highlights there, um, we experienced outstanding growth in our third grade between 2023 and 2024. Our team has really tackled the challenges that have been put before them with the third grade laws this year. And every day, we're getting a little better at meeting those expectations from the state. Most of our teachers who were, I guess, blessed to be able to teach the same thing in '23 and now moving in. moving into the '24 school year, saw increases in their achievement scores. They've really run with the resources they've been given and the coaching that's been provided them, and they're making it work for our students, and we're very proud of them for that. Specifically in math, we saw our scores rise in every tested grade level. That's something, again, that we just are very, very thankful to see within Hickory Creek. It's a testament to the hard work between our teachers and our coaches, and that they are working every day to better understand the standards, the adopted curriculum, and what quality teaching truly does look like. Moving beyond academics, Hickory Creek students, they have opportunities to become valuable and conscientious community members, thanks to the work of our staff within the building. Those staff members go above and beyond to give these young people the opportunity to learn outside the classroom. A couple of those things that students can do, in fifth grade, our students can apply to become HAWK helpers. These students are leaders and role models for their grade, but also to our younger students in the building. They come in early in the morning to assist in our opening operations in the building, and then they stay to help deliver things to the classrooms when they're too heavy for our younger students. They help remind us what it means to be a HAWK. You'll see them out in the hallways stationed around the building, reminding everybody to be respectful, responsible, and safe as we start our days. We also have a green team that tackles the management, waste management and recycling in our building. Those students take the time to collect recyclable materials that our classrooms have been saving, and they're learning what those efforts can do for the environment around Warren County. And in a school our size, when every classroom works together, it really is an opportunity to make an impact in our community. We also have our Beta Club that combines academic achievement and community involvement. Those sponsors help lead our students to compete beyond Warren County at both the state and the national level, and they are working to embrace achievement in areas related to school subjects and in the arts, which play a large role in the development of a complete student. This year, we were proud to celebrate several students achieving at the national and state level, and one that we were particularly proud of was last year, our fifth grader Carson Ward placed third in the nation in elementary digital art when he attended the National Convention in Savannah this summer. Another area that interests many of our students are athletics, and we have opportunities that are growing there. And I will start this by saying, we have had a request to see how esports may make it down into the elementary level. But currently, they do have options for our boys and girls to compete in the county basketball league. We have some very dedicated coaches there that take very young students, teach them the fundamentals, and then work them up so that they have the skills to play as a team and understand the game better every year. Our program has a very successful history in the basketball league, and we're looking forward to continuing that. We also have a cheerleading program that keeps our students busy. These young ladies practice very frequently to cheer and perform at those basketball games, and they bring spirit to our sports and around our school that helps make it an enjoyable experience. We also do have an archery program that allows students to explore something that they may not have the option to do in their home, especially when you look at a school that has a population like ours, where most of our students are inside of a more urban, I guess, part of Warren County, if that exists. But Coach Sally leads these students every spring to shoot at the state level, and the program is growing in popularity when you talk to our kids about what they want to do. As many opportunities that exist to celebrate our accomplishments with our students, we also definitely want to take a moment to celebrate our teachers and staff. Every year, we select the outstanding examples of what educators should be with our Teacher of the Year program. Last year, our, the teacher peers selected Ms. Stacy Elam and Ms. Katie Castleman as our Hickory Creek Teachers of the Year to represent us in the Warren County level. Just Friday night, we were extremely proud to go with Ms. Castleman to Nashville and see her recognized as the Middle Tennessee Grand Division Teacher of the Year for the State of Tennessee. And I will say, probably one of the most rewarding parts of that evening for me was to be able to sit at the table with Ms. Katie, with her husband and her mother, and just see the pride that they had for the recognition of her accomplishments in the classroom. She really is an inspiration in our building for teachers that go above and beyond for their students, and they really just work every day to be better at their craft. Teachers in our building also give their time and energy outside of their immense classroom duties on a variety of teams. We have people participating in our operational leadership team, an instructional leadership team, our Capturing Kids' Hearts Process Champions Team, the RTI2B Positive Behavior Team. And without the extra efforts of teachers at all of these different things, many things would not happen around the creek, as they call it. We are also thankful for the teachers and staff that commit the extra time to our 21st Century After School program, and also Acceleration Academy throughout the month of June, because that is just an extra month that they are giving to the service of our students. And we couldn't go tonight without saying thank you very much for the support of our community members through both our PTO and our Partners in Education. Our PTO is made up of a group of family members who provide exceptional support to our school, taking on upgrade projects, encouraging and supporting our staff, and celebrating school spirit. These parents and family members do all this work with very limited recognition, but a measurable impact on our school. The commitment of our Partners in Education is something that we are very blessed to have. We are very thankful for First National Bank and Grace Family Pharmacy for their committed, their continued commitment to Hickory Creek. We hope that over the next year, that each one of you takes an opportunity to come and visit Hickory Creek and kind of see what we've got going on there. We have students and staff who are very proud of everything that we do, and they love to share that when we have visitors in the building. We want to take a moment to just say thank you to the Board of Education here in Warren County, and also to all of our central office staff members, because without the support that you give to us, things that we're able to accomplish just don't happen. So we are thankful for each and every one of you. But there's just a brief snapshot about what's going on at Hickory Creek right now, so.
Any questions for Ms. Graves?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item on our agenda is school nutrition. This is something that was actually approved by the Executive Committee, and I thought that this would be something you really need to hear and are excited about. So Ms. Terry Mulliken, who's our school nutrition director, is here to talk a little bit about local fresh beef. So Terry, I'll let you take it away.
Okay. We signed our agreement for beef with the Barton Creek Farms. We're gonna do five schools, pilot them. If it goes well, our plan is to do all 10 schools next year. They did our first beef delivery on Tuesday of last week. They'll deliver the first Tuesday of every month through April. So if you're out and we're having tacos, homemade lasagna or meatloaf, drop by and try it out. So, and they're really excited. They were more excited about getting it than I thought they would be. So we're excited to do it.
Any questions about this program?
I would just like to thank Ms. Mulliken for taking the lead on this. I, one of the nutrition director over in DeKalb County, they started doing this and partnered up with a local farmer down there. And I'd seen it on social media, and she was actually on Channel 4 News the week before last. And Ms. Mulliken already informed me that they were already working on a deal with Barton Creek Farms. I'm very good friends with the Roder family that owns Barton Creek Farms, very good family, raise exceptionally high-quality beef. So I'm extremely excited about this, and hopefully we can add to these schools, or other schools above these five that we're doing. So I really appreciate you taking the lead in making this happen, Ms. Mulliken.
Thank you.
I'll just join Mr. Colwell, compliments to you for taking the lead in doing this. I think locally sourcing, whatever it is, school supplies, and particularly the nutrition supplies, is one of the best things we can do. It supports local businesses, and those businesses, in turn, through their property taxes, support the school system. So it's a wonderful circularity, to keep the money flowing, and it gets bigger. But this is farm-to-table, fresh. It's a wonderful thing, so compliments to you all.
Thank you. And most of the thanks goes to our staff, because without them, we wouldn't be doing this.
Right, yeah, thanks to the staff.
All right, thank you, Ms. Terry. Several updates as the beginning of the year, that's the way it always goes. Just an update about the strategic planning process. Appreciate those that have been able to provide some feedback around that. Talked with Bobby Cox today, and actually several times over the last few weeks. And with the fact that we are transitioning into new board members, we felt like that we would wait and give them an opportunity to provide some input on that strategic plan as well. So this would be a topic that we would undertake in our workshop. And so we've identified four areas of strategy that we'll talk about, and let you all have some feedback, and also let our new board members have some feedback as well. I shared those with you, but I can say those publicly: focused educational opportunities and outcomes, processes that prioritize and enhance social, emotional well-being, recruitment and retention of teachers and leaders, and engagement through communications. And so I shared those four areas with you on email on Friday, and we'll spend some more time talking about that in September. So just wanted to give you an update about that. Any questions I can answer about that? All right, also a substitute teacher update. You all have asked several questions. I asked Ms. Chelsea Crisp, who works with our substitutes. She was able to provide that for you. It should be in your packet. And so just want to let everyone know that we currently have 138 active substitute teachers. That's the highest that that number has been, and so we've continued to increase that. I believe that's a byproduct of this board voting to up the pay. It's a part of it, certainly. And so also that we have lots of folks that are wanting to work in our school system. We have 45 substitutes that are in the onboarding process. So if we can get at least a majority of those, we'll be more than 150 subs that would be available, substitute teachers that would be available. So we're very, very happy about that. You can see that she's been working through the mandatory employee trainings. I've had that question asked from the community. These are our employees. They are required to do the same trainings that everyone else does and go through the same process, so it can be labor-intensive. And so Chelsea's done a really good job of being able to navigate that and put some things in place for them. In particular, this year, you know, knowing the safety protocols and all the things that they have to be able to execute in the classroom that they're filling in, the personal electronic device policy, being aware of that, being able to enforce that, because one sub may be in one building one day, and another building another day, and another building the next day. So they're going lots of different places, and they have to have a lot of flexibility. So very pleased with that report, with that many folks that we're being able to employ, and hope to only see that improve as we move on. So any questions about substitute teachers?
I'm glad to see that, you know, they're talking about updates to the subtractor, subtracker, and I think that was a little bit of an issue, but I'm glad to see that they're updating on that. And that was some of the feedback that I'd got from some teachers of that process. But I knew, I know that was new process, and we've kind of created that, and glad to see we're working through it.
We're still not where we want to be. You know, again, when you respond sometimes to some issues, just like I talked about with the locks, sometimes it looks good on paper and it doesn't actually work out in actuality. So still working through that, but we are hopefully getting better, and everybody's being able to understand that.
Dr. Shaw, so these 138 active and 45 in the onboarding process, do you know about what percentage would be certified?
I do not. It would be a low percentage, simply because most everybody that's certified, we're trying to hire them full-time.
Okay, makes sense, makes sense. But it was a good move by the administration and this board to provide that pay differential. I think that's useful. Thank you.
All right, student enrollment. Mr. Martin was going to be here to talk about that, and we got our, we got our signals crossed. So he's going to come in the September meeting. But let me give you an update. We're just under 6,100 as far as our ADM goes for this end of August. That is down from the year before, but we're working through some things. You know, our high school enrollment is down almost 100 students from where it was. Now, I think there's some various issues with that. One can be size of classes that rise. The freshman class, lower number than normal. This is probably not something you want me to say, but I'm gonna say it anyway. I do believe the policy has sent some students looking elsewhere for educational services, but that's okay. I think we're okay with that, because for the most part, we believe it to be the right move. And so we also have, through Warren Connect, we were offering some homeschool services, and that company actually changed hands, and we really couldn't even offer that anymore. So that true virtual population has expanded, and so their numbers are still growing even as of today. So we, I do believe that our enrollment is not finalized as of yet. And of course, you know it's gonna ebb and flow as we go through that. So, but we are a little bit down from where we were a year ago, but I'm not necessarily worried about that so far. We'll get where we need to be. Okay? All right, so finally, something for you to vote on. You have a proposal in front of you. You heard the student advisory talk about the fact that the high school changed from the modified block schedule to the traditional block schedule. So making sure that you all are aware of that. It's four-by-four, so they'll have four classes in the fall, and then at Christmas, they'll change to four new classes in the spring. When we've set the calendar, you remember, we set the calendar almost a year in advance. We set parent-teacher conference, but those dates that are there right now do not work for a traditional four-by-four schedule, because right now, our original date for the high school parent-teacher conference is November the 11th. If you wait until November the 11th to have a parent-teacher conference, and they change that class at Christmas, you've waited way too late. Same thing in reverse in the spring. The parent-teacher conference was scheduled for January 23rd. They're not even gonna have enough data, really, to know what's going on. So your proposal, it came from Mr. Hobbs, is to move the following parent-teacher conference dates from November the 11th to October the 1st. That's 2024. And then there's a misprint in your proposal. It should be from January 23rd, 2025, to March the 11th, 2025. If you'll notice on that same calendar, Warren Connect is listed with Warren County High School. We're going to actually move them to the same night as the middle school parent-teacher conference. That works better for them, with them being on campus. So I'm submitting to you that request to move those parent-teacher conference and alter the calendar.
All right, can I get a motion for a approval to change the parent-teacher conference dates this fall and the spring, Dix?
So, move.
Motion by Mr. Bennett?
Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Judkins. Any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
All right, thank you. So next item for you to consider is directly related to Public Chapter 810, and this is around a visitor's code of conduct. And you heard me probably talk about this, son. But the requirement of Public Chapter 810 is that each local Board of Education adopt a code of conduct for visitors that really explains what types of behaviors are expected on our school campus. This code of conduct was written for us by our legal counsel, Chuck Kegel, and was given to our school administrators for them to discuss what parts of that, it was, I think, 11 pages at its outset. So our school administrators took that, compiled a list of things that they felt like were important, and sent that back to Mr. Kegel for his approval. And if you'll see at the bottom of it, he says, it says, and this is a requirement by law, that our Warren County School Board Attorney must sign off, and it says the visitor code of conduct has been reviewed and approved by Charles W. Kegel, the Warren County School Board Attorney, and his bar number is written there. So it is submitted to you tonight for your approval. Happy to answer any questions that you have. But once again, it is really clarifying what the expectations for our visitors to campus are, and if they cannot follow those expectations, it also clarifies what the results will be.
All right.
Chairman, I want to move for adoption of the code of conduct for visitors as presented.
We've got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Colwell. Any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
All right, motion carries. All right, last item on Operations Report is the budget and fundraising approval. You should also have that in your packet. Just remember, again, you've done this in the past. A couple of years ago, we started the process of asking you all to approve these, simply so that we could make sure that everybody's on the same page. You've been provided with the starting balance, the estimated revenues, the expenses. Because remember, fundraising, we are a nonprofit organization, so fundraising should be done to provide for things in that school year. And so... And so, we've worked really, really hard to make sure that we're trying to do that, and so, those balances are there for you to see. The fundraisers that have been requested by each school are there, and their purpose is there as well. And so, again, submitted to you tonight for your approval.
Can we get a motion on approval of Warren County's budget and fundraising approval? Some of them, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Colwell, second by Ms. Vess. Any discussion over this fundraising proposals?
Mr. Chairman, just a real quick comment. I have, for years, been interested in seeing more transparency with out-of-county, sometimes out-of-state vendors who come in and kind of a fundraiser out of a box, if you know what I'm talking about. I'm, I'm not saying that, that we should severely restrict that. I know that for the convenience of the school administration, and their, their first job is teaching. And I know that it is a, it's a hit on their daily schedule to, to do a lot of work on these fundraisers. So, if something can facilitate this fundraising, I think that's a positive. However, I believe that the, that the commercial, for-profit vendors should have transparency. I think that the school community, the parents, school administration should know what percentage of the sales they're taking back home with them. Back in my, we always talk about back in my day, but you know, when we had the PTO, we called them PTAs back then, fundraisers, it was a lot of work for the teachers and staff, and it still is where they do it. We still do the spring festivals, fall festivals, these things, and, and that's great. My compliments to all of the volunteers, community, school staff who support that. I think that is the, the purest and best form of local fundraising. But for the, but for the, I can't help but think of the word carpetbagger, but I didn't mean to say that. I didn't mean to say that. But forgive me for saying that. But, but let's say the for-profit vendors who, who come in here, set up a fundraiser, I, I think the community should know what they're taking back with them versus what stays in the community. So, that's just a comment. I'm gonna support this. I'm, I'm all in favor of it.
Was that word on your bingo board for the night?
Yeah.
I appreciate that, Mr. Bennett. All right, so, any other discussion over this? All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
That's it?
That's it for you. All right, moving on to personal achievement. And other business, we have told to move.
I, I don't know that this needs official action, but we, we'd like to move the October 28th meeting to October 24th. I believe that's been, we reached out about that date. So, again, I think that's just more of an announcement. You all are okay with that being.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, before we close things out, if I could have maybe, maybe just, we'll get out of here before 6:30, I promise. But what I said earlier about my appreciation for this board and the school administration and the leadership, I say in all sincerity, I truly believe that we couldn't have a better situation with, with the board and the, the administration than what we have here. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna leave you with a couple of asks, if I can. One is very material, and it's gonna cost you some money, okay? We have pretty well taken care of the communities, what we call the community schools, the rural schools, with a lot of their facilities, but I have been campaigning and lobbying for a long time about the West Elementary Gym Nation, and that, that is inadequate in every sense of the word. I hope that you'll take a look at that. There is room to expand, to move that wall, the south wall toward the civic center, out of the playground area. I want you to think about that, but before you do, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to take a look at something else, and that's the possibility of reconfiguring. I don't want to start any rumors this evening, but if that is a possibility of reconfiguring the graves, then you may be able to avoid that. If you make West a, a K3 school, possibly you, you could avoid that expense. But if not, I think that gymnasium is long overdue, long overdue. So, that, that's the material ask. The other thing is, is an intangible. I'm just gonna ask that, and plead with you, and I have great confidence in this board and you members coming onboard, take care of our students. And the way you take care of the students is by taking care of those who take care of them, the teachers, the support personnel. I think this board and administration have, have performed marvelously in trying to support these people, but let's make sure that our teachers have the respect and have the resources, have the motivation, have the professional development opportunities to do the very best we can for our students. There is no big hand that's gonna reach into Warren County and save Warren County students. It's gonna be Warren County. So, if that happens, if our students are to continue to progress and advance and be able to be competitive, self-sufficient, economically viable units in the future, it starts here. So, I, I just plead with you, do everything you can to show a thank you and a gesture of, of appreciation and respect for our teachers. I think they've been, in many ways, disparaged and vilified, and there's a, there's a very distinct and visible political motive for doing that. I think it's highly discreditable, but it's there nevertheless. There are forces that want, that want the public to think our schools are failing. They are not failing. When we have Middle Tennessee Teacher of the Year three times out of four years, no, this system's not failing. We're performing. Some of the, some of the systems that have been set up to evaluate and grade schools and give us letter grades, don't capture what really goes on in the schools. They don't capture the heart and the passion of our teachers to want to do it right. So, I, I just urge this board, all of you, do everything you can to support the teachers and those who support them. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm off my soapbox. You'll get out at 6:30.
That's all right. Before we dismiss, I just want to, again, thank you two guys for all your service to this board, and not only this board, to this community, to our schools, to our staff, to our students, the work you guys have done, the support you've given to us. Personally, I just want to thank you for your service, and, you know, what we're looking forward, it's a solemn moment to you two guys rolling off, but we're looking forward and excited to our two new members who will be sitting at this table next month, Mr. Jarvis Johnson and Mr. Matt Brown. We want to thank you guys for being here, and we look forward to working with you two starting next month and seeing what we can do, work together for that.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to thank each and every one of y'all for reaching out to him in the passing of a mother. Appreciate the phone calls, and most of all, your prayers, our family. Thank you.
She was a remarkable woman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we're fixing to have all male board, and I don't know who's gonna be her mother hen. It's been a long time since this board has not had a female sitting on the boards, so like I say, somebody's gonna have to step up, but I don't think nobody wants to carry the title of a mother hen as, as a male figure here. But I think Larry's doing a good job about getting her breakfast table down there. He's, Tanya was the one for that. And as far as a mother hen, somebody's gonna have to step up, be director of vocabulary, take Mr. Zettman's place.
Absolutely.
That's gonna be some big shoes to fill. I'm definitely not qualified. And I'm gonna tell this story, because Ms. Vess was very, very welcoming four years ago. She set the bar high for what a chairman's supposed to be, and when she was reaching out, she's, you know, she was, you know, describing everybody, you know, personalities and everything. She said, "Mr. Zettman," she said, "you won't find anybody any smarter." She said, "You may have to Google some of the words that he says." He said, "But it'll be okay, because you'll be there with the rest of us." And so, all jokes aside, we appreciate yous.
Thank you.
Get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Get a second. Second. All in favor, say aye.
All in favor.
Okay, thank you. Board members, don't run off. We'll get some pictures. Matt and Jarvis, y'all too, we'll get some pictures with everybody.
I'm gonna tell you, the best place to take pictures at this point is down in the new regiment. If you feel like you can.
We are, and we will invite you two back to our new, our first meeting.